Okay, so we've returned to public session. We already did our call to order, so if you'd like to join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, sorry, I did that. Okay, so we are going to change the order of our meeting a little bit and move public comment to after the awards section because we have quite a few people to recognize. So, Mrs. Dumas?
Thank you. Before we start with the athletes, we've got a few replies from all of them. We have two prestigious awards that the superintendent is allowed to give every year from National School Development Council. We'd like to have Matthew Lucid present up and center. These two awards are given to prestigious achievement for academic growth and student leadership. So it's not just the academic piece that they must have, but the leadership as well. And it is given only to two students, and you're one, so congratulations. The other individual was not able to be with us today. She is Rebecca Crystal, so it is also for academic growth and student leadership. So we congratulate her also. It's nice to help both. What we have with us here are winners. We've had quite a sports season and athletic season, and I'm going to turn it over to Steve Vertundi, who is going to give us all those great accolades. We're very excited.
Yeah, I want to say we're very excited to be here. It was very, it was an honor to be asked. As many know in the community, there was a lot of success this fall. I think it was unprecedented in terms of the amount of success. We had, at one point in time, Cohasset was the only school in the entire state, all divisions, all levels, that had every team still competing in their respective tournament. So, as a whole, as a big group effort, it was an amazing, it was amazing fall for everybody on a lot of different fronts. And I'm going to let these individuals introduce themselves, tell you what team they're from, highlight some of the accomplishments and how far they got this season, and give a highlight. And before I do, I want to say, though the success was overwhelming and a joy for me, really my big highlight of the season is just how much this entire group of individuals, these captains, these leaders, really fill the role of student athlete. Me coming in this year, being new, there's going to be change. Sometimes change is resistant, resisted, and with me wanting to change some things culturally, the maturity that these kids here showed with welcoming me and the way they just act on a day-to-day basis, it makes me proud to put on this shirt and have to stand on the sideline and support them. And I think a lot of people got to see that and take that in. So that was my big highlight as a whole, not just the success in terms of the wins or losses, but, you know, they see me with the trophies and they say, "Oh, can I see that?" And I tell them, "That's, this is, these are their trophies. They earned it, these belong to them. This is what they accomplished." So now I would like to turn it over to you to introduce yourselves and give us a little on the highlight of the successes you had this fall. Starting with our cheerleaders.
Hi, guys. My name is Owen Scott, and I am one of the Cohasset Cheerleading captains, and this is one of my co-captains.
Hi, and this is All Russell. So, like, I'll start off with this trophy. We won first place at Cheer for a Cure.
Yep.
And then, so, one of the highlights of our season was, so, we spent, like, most of our season, like, its goal was to make it to regionals.
Yep.
Which we, which we did.
We made it to regionals for the first time ever in Cohasset Cheerleading history.
To make it to regionals, you need a 73 at least. So, um, we were just trying to get, like, a 73 and, like, exceed it for, like, all our competitions. And we actually ended up getting it, like...
An 80?
Yeah, an 80. And not at least.
So, I'm going to talk a little bit about regionals. So, of course, it was our first time. So, for regionals, we just went there with, we knew nothing. Our coach, it was her first time going, so we went there, we were like, "We're happy to be here, we're just going to try our best." So, we weren't trying to win because after regionals would have been states. So, we were just trying to go there and have fun. So, when we went there, we actually came in fourth out of six teams, which is very good for our first year ever going to regionals, so we are very happy how our season ended.
Girls soccer.
I'm Sophie Swartwood, and I'm one of the captains for Cohasset girls soccer.
I'm Rachel Regan, I'm also a captain.
I'm May Pumpery. I'm captain of girls soccer.
I'm Amy Too, and I'm also a captain of girls soccer.
Um, yeah, so, I mean, I love all of them. And Cohasset girls soccer is really, like, a family, and it always has been for my four years. I'm a senior now, they're all seniors. We really grew up together and we spend so much time with each other when you're on a team like this. And so, like, every night before we had a game, like, "What are we doing, guys? Like, what are we going to eat? Like, we have to do it together." And it's just, and it's such a family. So when it ended, it was really sad, but we actually had a really successful, successful season. We were a social league champs, which is, like, the first time we've been social league champions since, like, straight out. I think they tied it, like, in 2003. It was, like, first time we went straight out since, like, 1996 or something. So it was pretty impressive, we were proud of ourselves. And then the tournament, we made it pretty far. And we ended up going to PKs with the team that won the state championship. So we don't have a trophy, but they never, they, like, never went to PKs with any other team. And so, like, we were proud of what we accomplished this year. And, like, although it did sting to lose that way, I still love them and I'm, like, really happy for the season that we had, so, yeah.
Hi, I'm Emma Stevens, and I'm a captain for field hockey.
Hi, I'm Melly Arnold, and I'm a senior field hockey captain.
I'm Jane Anderson, I'm also a captain.
I'm Maddie Donovan, I'm a junior captain.
I'm Molly Garrett, and I'm a junior, and I'm another captain of the field hockey.
Um, we had a really good season this year. We made it all the way to the finals. Unfortunately, we lost, but a highlight of our season was we beat in triple overtime the number one seed, so, and we lost to them two years ago, and they knocked us out of the tournament. That was really exciting.
Also for the team that won the state championship, right?
Yeah, we lost to them. Dennis Drummond.
I'm Jessica Good, I'm from the Hull girls cross-country team, I'm a captain.
I'm Mia, I'm a captain of the Cohasset girls cross-country team.
I'm Elise.
Um, I'm really, I'm also a captain of Cohasset whole country. So, this year for girls cross-country, as our coach said, it was, like, one of the best seasons we've had since the program started. Girls and boys actually both won the league championship, which we've never done before, which is really cool. We sent seven girls to states, everyone did really well. We sent one to all states, and she did amazing there, too, which was crazy. We've never done that before either. So, yeah, it was, like, an awesome season for us. We had a really, really strong team, and I think next year is going to be a really strong team, yeah.
My name's Michael Dodges, I'm a boys cross-country captain from Hull.
I'm Tori Vayner, I'm also a captain.
I'm Ian Turple, and I'm a captain from Cohasset. So, one of the cool things about cross-country is we're a co-op team with Hull, so we get to meet kids from other town, or, well, another town. And they're all great kids. We had arguably the best season in boys' cross-country history. Mia aforementioned it. We, uh, we won the league championship. We beat a normal team in the league championship that we haven't beat ever actually in program history. They've been the reigning league champions for, I would say, probably 20 years now. They've, they've won it back to back to back to back to back to how many years cross-country's been around and much. So, that was, that was, that was a fantastic feeling. We placed second in the Division VI Eastern Mass State Championship, and that allowed us to go to the All-State Championship, which we have never done ever. And we finished 12th out of 20th, I believe, at All-States. So, um, we had Tori Vayner here, he placed third in the league. He set a school record this year, we ran 1657, 5K, so, which is, he beat my record unfortunately. But, um, no, it was great to see him do that. He's one of my best friends, and I couldn't be happier with the season, the four years I've been on the cross-country team, so, yeah.
Hello, my name's Ian Dunkburger. I'm one of three captains for the boys soccer team this year. The other two unfortunately couldn't make it. So this year, I've had quite a few highlights. We've won our South Shore League title for probably the fifth or sixth time in a row. We won our, the South Sectional title for the third year in a row, and that's how we got the trophy. And so, on our way to the South Sectional title, we beat both our sectional rivals against Hackett in PKs, and Carver in the final game. And it was really awesome to see, to see the team come together. Since the beginning of the season, we were struggling. We went 2-4 for the first six games, which was really tough. But, um, it was really nice to see the team come back, and we had a good time.
How's it going, guys? Suppose you don't know me. My name is, uh, Jackson Mory, and I'm a senior football team.
I'm Jackson Jashere, I'm also the senior captain of the football team. And, um, so basically, to start off the season, not that many kids were excited for the football team, but, like, we tried to get everyone's spirits going, and it was nice to come out to win to Rockland the first game, who we previously lost to in the last two years. So it was nice to get everyone, like, on our, on our side. And, uh, then we went on a little stretch where we went 4-0, which was a nice start. But then, uh, we lost to our actual rival, Ashby, who was, uh, 28-0 at the time, so they, they've been winning since last season. And, uh, then we bounced back and had a game where we won, and then we lost to our other rival, Abington, which was, uh, tough. But then, uh, it was time for playoffs, and luckily we made it, which is a good feeling because we have made playoffs in a little bit. How's it with you?
Um, yeah, going with what you actually said, um, coming into the season, we had high expectations, um, for the group. Personally, it's, like, um, like, the best group of seniors, uh, that I've ever been around. We're both tight-knit, we're all, we're all, always a big family, and, um, these are the most talented, um, talented senior group as well. And, um, going off what Jackson said, we had a great strategy going 4-0 for the first four games, and, um, we kind of spiraled a little bit towards the end of the regular season. But going into the tournament, uh, we knew it was our time to prove everyone wrong, and, uh, so we took it ourselves, we started in the first round pretty easily, and then we went to Mashby and actually beat them. They hadn't lost in the state of Massachusetts in our division in three years. Uh, so that was a huge win for us, and then, uh, we went to the sectional finals in Abington, um, and also avenged that earlier season loss. Then we made it to the state semifinals, where we unfortunately lost to Saint Mary's 22-11. One game away, we were like, so close, so close. But, um, I couldn't have been prouder of a group of guys, and I'm happy I was able to spend this four years with my class.
Hi, my name's Joe Neely, and I'm a captain of the golf team.
I'm Brad Albany, senior captain of the golf team as well.
So, golf had a solid season. In our league, we finished with a record of eight and three, which is good for golf. Um, in sectionals, um, we finished fourth out of 10 teams.
And then we qualified for the league meet as well, because of the four best of each team in our, in our league. They all went to this wonderful course in Mashby, uh, played 18 holes, had brunch afterwards. We came second out of eight teams, and I individually placed third out of 32 players with a D1.
That's awesome. I think you need a group picture with the school committee, so I'm going to move you. Mr. Stevens, you have the reputation. With Matthew as well?
Take a picture of this one. Put one more in there, please. Take a picture of him holding all those trophies. That's a good first, yeah.
Just remind me of the ones I didn't get.
No, no.
Thank you.
You got to see. One for the scratch.
So wonderful fall. It's beautiful. Yeah. Want to take, can you get a better view?
I don't know. Looks, looks good to me. There you go. One, two, three.
Good job. Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations.
It's your honor.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda then is public comment. We first have a statement that the superintendent is going to read. We are going to limit questions. If you do have a comment that you want to make, you're welcome to make it within the time limits of public comment. But we're not going to have a question and answer period. We're hoping that some of what Louise states will answer some of the questions that you have been expressing to us. I would suggest that if you do have further questions, that you submit them in writing, and we will put together a response to the best of our ability.
Thank you. On September 25th, the Cohasset Police Department notified me, the administration, that it had received an allegation of an additional student in regard to Mr. Knight. And according to the police affidavit filed in the court to, uh, yesterday, or today, the incidents occurred in 19, in 2014 and 2015, and the student reported them this September. And a report was to her parent and went directly to the police. It was on September 22nd that Chief Quigley informed me by email that he had received this allegation about Mr. Knight. The police opened an investigation and notified DCF. And based on that information that we've obtained to date, the student did not report these incidents to the school. She told her parent, who went to the police, as is the family's right. The incidents, according to the police affidavit filed in court today, occurred in 2014 to September 2015. Yesterday, November 27th, we learned that DCF made a finding that a report of neglect was to the school employee was not supported. Yesterday also, November 27th, we also received a copy of the police affidavit, which contains some information that is new to us. The investigation, our district continues to, this investigation into the matter. We ensure that all the facts that we need, and we, to make sure that we are doing everything necessary to support and protect our students. We continue to support our students. We have done a great many supportive things in a very short time. The list is endless, as I have stated with, uh, the staff this afternoon. We've added a counselor to our middle school. We've worked with South Shore Health Connection Barbara Green, with Margaret Hannah and Nija Riley of the Friedman Family and Family Institute of William James University, which I am going to present tonight as our supporting with the Safe Harbor. We have our Safe School Committee under the direction of Dr. Sullivan and myself. The curriculum change for social-emotional learning is excelling. It culminates this Friday on a professional development on wellness. We have worked with Chief Quigley and the police to a very successful integration of text-to-tell. We have a sixth grade seminar that today I sat in, where students talked about situations that are not lose-lose, but win-win, uh, when working in, in situations with other people. We have an honors code that is taught to all ninth graders that show resilience, speaking up for oneself, taking leadership. That is with, uh, Mr. Ford, who teaches all ninth grades. He's accelerated that unit to start today, this week, in the advent of what has been happening. We've added counselors today and tomorrow for our students, and they are familiar faces. They are the counselors that children know from Osgood and Deerhill. We've added work with Safe Harbor. We have a crisis team that met today. It meets every Wednesday to discuss, uh, known individuals and faculty wellness and student wellness. We work very closely with Nicole Garrity and Christine Murphy in Safe Harbor. We have a, an increasingly positive relationship with RSRO, Craig, Greg Taylor, who I had a conversation with just an hour ago, with Chief Quigley, who I speak to just about daily, and, uh, with Mike Lopes, the detective, who I also spoke to today. So we are on the same page. I, we have a child study team that is well organized and re-establishing. We look at children who we see have needs. We have training in November for all staff on training on revisiting 51A reported mandated reporting. In addition to that, the staff was asked to volunteer to, uh, take an online refresher from Middlesex DA on child reporting and 51A. And, uh, up to date, I think we have close to 30 staff who have taken advantage of that. That's how dedicated they are. We have, uh, also talked about suggestion box and faculty gatherings where we talk about, uh, particular issues that are relevant to the middle school, to the high school, to Deerhill, and to Osgood. I do want to say, though, that I cannot say enough about the staff. They feel beaten up right now, and they need your support. They want your, your compliments, they want your, your feedback, and they want to know that the community is behind them. My fear is losing very gifted staff. I speak from the heart. If I lose them, I will be very upset. And they're feeling right now that they need your support, and that is very valuable. I hope that, of anything, you hear that for them. Some of them are here today, they've been attending. They would very much like to hear from you. I can also share, if I may, about, uh, the principal. Brian Scott, um, has been out for two days. He has, had not been feeling well. He is out, or his doctor has estimated that he may need to take him, to take care of a minor health issue, approximately two weeks. He plans to be back December 11th. He hopes to be back earlier. I spoke to him today. In the interim of his absence, I have to give great accolades to Dr. Sullivan, who has experience as a principal, who has been stepping in and assisting both assistants. Stephanie Moriarty, who is, some people are gifted at teaching, and some people are gifted at administration, and she has both. She has done a yeoman's job in working in very difficult situations, as has Carrie Adashi, who is new to our district, uh, for the middle school. Brian has also expressed, and I can share, he's said that I can with you, that he feels that his short-term stand-in as principal was that a short-term good fix in structure, and I agree. He did a great job. He really would prefer and plans to come back as assistant principal, and want his return, whenever that is, and to assist in the transition for, um, someone who can have a better toolbox and better experience to lead as principal. So, over the weekend, in conjunction with speaking with Brian, uh, we came up with a plan. I've secured someone who, uh, our finance director, Michael McMillan, and Dr. Sullivan and myself, Jared Buchanan, and actually the two assistants who met, a possible person who is highly recommended to me. We are in the process of securing that person. She is a veteran retired high school principal with a great deal of experience in just what we need and the kind of support to give our staff. I'm finalizing pending negotiations. She hopes to be with us by the end of December and definitely by the beginning of January, and is available for the remainder of the year. And that's where we stand at the moment.
Thank you. Yes. Hi, Tima Ombra, and I'm Tina Jukandra. I have just two, two questions that are not related to each other. One, has the school, like, told the students, like, I, you guys talked about providing support and counseling for the other student, but has there been any encouragement for any girls or any boys who have been harmed or, like, harassed by Mr. Knight, but haven't had the strength to come forward? Because I think this is very important. We don't know how many girls or boys are at school who have been harassed by him and who just don't, are scared to speak up. So maybe the idea that, the fact that a girl did not come to the school and went to her parents, and the parents called the, that, uh, police, this is telling of how much there kinda is, like, lack of trust at this point, and maybe they don't realize that they can come safely and talk about this, so that's the first thing. And the second thing, um, you just mentioned the thing about how your staff feel beaten up, and I have five children in this school, so I know very well that we have amazing selfless teachers. But, um, you, I think one of your shortcomings is the fact they did not communicate about Mr. Scott earlier, especially that for his bad luck, it happened on the same day that the other thing with Mr. Knight happened, so it put him unfortunately under the spotlight. And before you ask us to support the staff, you should have been there for your staff and should have immediately seen...
Uh, we're, we're not criticizing the superintendent's performance.
Okay, fine. There, there should have been an immediate response to make sure that there is any speculation from the parent's side, which is very obvious, that this should have been brought out and being clarified from the beginning. And the other thing is, I feel like we, like, had, had this, had one of our students did what, like, Mr. Knight had done, that student would have been expelled a minute one. And I feel that, like, the fact that we're still discussing and the parents need have the chance to openly, have the chance to have a long time, like, get a forum where they can speak up and not be shut after two minutes or whatever, I think it's high-down league. Like, everyone wants to be within the status quo and politically correct, and everyone is scared to say the wrong thing because they might be, uh, coked. But I think, like, like, when I look at the agenda, it's as if, like, the incident of Mr. Knight had happened in Rockland and not in Cohasset. There is not any mention or any, like, we need to address this and not, like, pretend it never happened. So, yeah.
I don't think anybody is pretending it's never happened. We've given you a voice at every meeting for the last two months. Any questions that we can answer, we have. As I've said on numerous occasions, there are many things that we can't comment on. There are many things that we don't have knowledge of. We've asked for reports that we have not received yet. We have not received official findings. So, our hands are tied until we get this information. A comment?
Yep, so, I'm Jessica Dunson, 132, Chief Justice Pushing Highway. I did email, um, several questions, so I look forward to the... I did email several questions, so I look forward to those responses if that's how you would like to respond to them. But in regards to comments, I, Louise had said that on November twenty-seventh, there was an unsupported DCF report. My understanding is there's also a November seventeenth report with that supported sexual abuse findings. So I'm curious why that wasn't shared both tonight and publicly. That it's been the second report, July sixth was the first one and November twenty, uh, excuse me, seventeenth. Both the school system has been found negligent. Principal Conley and Jeff Knight, those things were not shared. While I can't ask questions, I'm going to express my disappointment in regards to Jeff Knight eventually, just as of yesterday resigning. I'm concerned that at this point Louise put that into the paper. There's a new report.
He did not resign yesterday. Okay. And he has not been here for quite some time. People for whatever reason are thinking that. He did resign a while back.
Okay, so if he did, so I'm not allowed to ask questions, but he resigned a while back. As a parent community, that would have been very helpful information to have known because his name is still on schedules. His name is still on iPass when you log in if your child has him. So if he has resigned, why wasn't that information shared? That's very concerning. Right tonight, on top of hearing about DCF reports and seeing copies of those, that that information was not shared. I continue to be concerned about Principal Conley and the physician. I appreciate that you worked hard to find somebody after Mr. Scott is unable to carry those duties out. But again, that information still hasn't been shared publicly. I'm not sure why the information wasn't shared yesterday to parents, knowing Mr. Scott had been out and that information was shared over the weekend.
If I can interrupt for a minute, there are two questions that I really want to answer for you. One, we do not receive DCF reports. They are sent to whoever is involved in the investigation. We do not get them.
So I spoke to DCF directly twice to two different supervisors and they said that they shared this information to the school system, to your office.
I did not, I do not receive them. They go to the person involved. So it would be.
But they were sent to, my understanding from speaking to the supervisor, was sent to the DA's office and to the school system when you were found negligent. They were so unfamiliar with finding school districts and employees negligent that they had to check their policies and follow through on those pieces, which is why they were pretty clear on what they did.
I have, well, I said the same thing.
I'm sorry.
There is a response.
Yeah, on this point, I just have a legal point to just share with you. I'm not going to get into the facts of the cases at all. But DCF is charged with finding, making findings against individuals, right? Not institutions.
Not true. On their first report, it finds the school system negligent.
Right. So I don't know how you know that because.
I have a copy of it and it's public. Well, you can ask for it and I called and I received copies.
From DCF directly?
Correct.
DCF directly?
And they're, yep, and they're also publicly around in the parent community, so.
All right, so let me just back up a minute. Yeah? When they, if they found an institution negligent, I'm not sure that's how that duty was supposed to be discharged. Typically, they would find individuals either supported or unsupported. And if that's the case about an individual, they would send results to the individual name, not necessarily to the central office, okay? Central office can make requests for information, but they have to know that the information exists and want it to ask for it.
Right, but we, as a parent community, at our first meeting that we had, that Louise had us go that first week of school, she was aware of that report from July. So you were aware at least of the first report and this November seventeenth, I'm confused, is that's not what I was told. I was told it was shared because your employees have been found. So if your employees have been found negligent and it's listed as sexual abuse, I can't imagine that you didn't receive a copy. And I do understand it goes to the DA's office as well, so. You may want to look into that because those are floating around.
I made public records request twice to DCF for those reports. There is a 51A finding and there is also a 51B. I've not received either of them. I received a copy from the police however.
And I think the reason why yesterday.
Within the last day.
And that came yesterday.
And my advice to districts, not just this one, is they don't comment on whether this person or that person, they wouldn't publicly state and announce findings that they received from DCF. In this particular instance, one of the findings was in the police affidavit, which is a public document. So that's out there in public anyway. Police shared that with the public. The other one, the finding of not support that the superintendent just mentioned, I think was to counter some of this information that's circulating yesterday and today on Facebook about a certain school employee. That had to be corrected instantly because that is not, so not what I'm referring to.
No, I understand. It is confusing because there's two separate things going on, two separate. Instances.
Reporter, I guess I'll say.
Correct, okay, so too big.
Yeah, it's confusing. The timeline is very confusing.
So in general, because I know my two minutes is up, I'm just expressing, I hope to get some other answers as you had said via email. I've emailed the superintendent last night. I emailed with you today, Jean. I have further questions and those that you can answer that are not confidential to the personnel etc., which I do understand. I would appreciate answers to. And I do want to go on record stating it's extremely frustrating, the lack of communication, the continued missteps by the district, especially upper administration. I'm very concerned. I'm well aware of regulations and laws. I do this for, I'm a director of student services. I understand all the regulations and laws associated with this and the investigations that need to happen, the personnel, and what we can as a district and cannot do. And I'm extremely disappointed in the way this has been handled.
Thank you.
Can I just, I think we would all appreciate the answers. I don't think it's just one parent.
Well then go ahead and send us your questions and we will put together a concise answer to what we can.
Yeah, so I, I'm happy to talk to you after the meeting about our four, you and my email and you can rephrase them and ask them.
Sure.
Couldn't you just post the answers to the questions that you had publicly?
We will put together a response to the questions in an appropriate manner.
But we couldn't answer the amount of information.
We can't, we can't answer some of them. We don't have the information that's been asked for.
Whatever answers, I'm suggesting whatever answers that you can provide to one parent, you could provide to multiple parents.
Right.
Wouldn't one thing?
And I, as I said, we will put together a response that is concise, that we could, for the things that we can address.
Publicly?
Sure.
Sure.
I mean, the questions that came in were regarding information we didn't have, basically, so.
Right. I'm just saying all of the questions, there isn't any parent here that's going to say, oh, I don't care about that. So I would think that any of the questions that you have answered to, rather than just responding to one parent, if you couldn't just send out a mass email to the district.
Right, and I agree. And it seems that there is a group of parents working together. So if you could work together on your questions, that would be great instead of.
Yeah, and then they can go out publicly.
And then.
Not necessarily. So there's a few people I've been in communication with, but there's only a few and I know there's many more have been emailing, so.
Yeah, we do have a meeting next week also on December fifth.
I was just suggesting that.
So, so maybe, so we might be able to come up with.
We might be able to come up with a response.
With a response for that. Okay?
If we move into the fifth.
The fifth.
The week, yeah.
Yeah, from tonight. Okay, so are we ready to move on?
I guess I've just one comment, and given on the website, one of the mission statements or one of the responsibilities by the school committee is not only to hire the superintendent, but also to evaluate the superintendent.
Right.
What is it, where is the line descend? Where's the red line that needs to be crossed by the superintendent so that evaluation gets to the point of dismissing the superintendent? Like, is there, is there one, I mean, like.
The superintendent's evaluation happens once a year. That will not happen until.
Okay, so in a crazy theoretical situation, superintendent kills ten people. Do we wait, do we wait until the end of the year?
That is, that is a crazy situation.
Okay, so all right, so therefore there are situations where we don't wait until the evaluation comes, right?
Yes.
So that's my, that's my point. I'm taking an extreme point and just, do you, do you, under no circumstances do you not wait until the scheduled evaluation before making a, you know, an ad hoc one?
Yes, there can be, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
And so where, at what point is the line descend where you say, you know what, this may be the time for me to make an ad hoc evaluation? This may be the time where I can't wait until we get to that point. We have to do it beforehand.
It's dictated by Massachusetts law, general law, the evaluation process. If there were something that was a serious offend, offense, and our superintendent has not been found guilty of any such offense, then certainly we would make, we would take action. But as I said, there is no, there has been no offense.
But like you said, if someone shot ten people, your superintendent, yeah, they'd be gone. That would be a qualifying thing to dismiss someone.
Right. Right now. Exactly. Exactly.
What about negligence?
Selling drugs, that kind of.
I don't believe that there has been any negligence.
Have you evaluated whether or not there's been negligence? Has there been, have you guys sat down together and said, let's see, have, you know, has there been negligence this time?
I think that's what police do and what I mean.
That's what an investigation is.
I mean, if I don't think like, if I have like.
Right, but. I really can't comment on somebody's performance in an open meeting. But we have met on several occasions and we have discussed the findings that have happened in the course of all of these investigations, and we have no reason to go forward with such an action.
If I could just say this, I think I'm probably Louise's biggest critic and publicly said it. And I got to tell you, going forward, I think she's done pretty well putting the safety committee together, for all you can say, Mr. Sullivan. And I think that it's been a tough time for her and it's been a tough time for the whole community and I think we're all suffering. And I think it's, you know, how do we move forward from here? We can, contracts up in June, we'll talk about renewal. But right now, she's in charge and she's got a good staff. She's got good teachers. A lot of them didn't leave. They respect her. We haven't heard one, I haven't got one email from a teacher. I haven't got, I've gotten a lot from parents. I'm a parent. Believe me, again, that's probably her biggest critic. You can probably say that, Louise. But I got to tell you, I'm here. I got to tell you, I'm impressed with the fact that what she did, she could have walked out the door, you know. She could have been, done that. I don't think it would have left our district in a better place. I think that putting these things together and like, let's let it play out. How do we go forward as a community? We're all hurt. Every single person in here is hurt. Come on. This isn't one, this isn't really anybody's fault except for the person who did it, all right? So a lot of us have, how do we move forward? We got to move forward for the kids, all right? We have great teachers. We have fantastic teachers. And Louise, thanks for putting them together. And thank you, Mr. Sullivan. And thank you for the, and I'd like to publicly say, my pleasure. I'd like to publicly say that we respect our teachers and as a parent, we're all in this together. We've got good people here. That's all I'm trying to say. As a parent, I'm behind scenes. Believe me, I'd be the first one to yell, you guys know me, I'd be the first one to yell it out if I thought that that would help my district. It would be easy for me to sit there and say, yeah, fire Louise. It wouldn't be good for the district. And I think that we could all agree to that. So that we want to move forward. How do we move forward? How do we step up our security? And we're doing those things. And as a community, we need to, we need to just all take a breath and understand that this is, we're all in this. These are all our children and everybody here. And thank you for caring and thank you for asking these questions. We will get these questions answered. And thank you for participating. But everybody here is here to help and to move our board, move our district forward. And that's all I have to say.
And the people that Louise has hired in her short tenure as superintendent have been amazing, absolutely amazing. So to judge her based on one hire that wasn't even hers, we got to look at all the other hires. Exactly.
We got some really good talent to teach.
We have to look at the whole, the whole scenario, not just one bad thing that's happened.
And, and you know, again, was it handled correctly? Absolutely not. I mean, let's face it. But she was put in a bad situation. I don't know if I could handle it so well, you know, because I'm sure it's hitting buttons for everybody. However, going forward, we're in a good place. Cohasset's in a good place. We've got good parents. We've got a good community. We're going to put, we're going to get through this and we're going to make it better.
Okay, so if there are no more comments.
I'd like to just make actually a positive comment, just and the superintendent talked about the teachers and I hope I agree that the teachers have, I, I mean, I know, I know myself, my wife, we have not thrown, you know, we haven't assumed that, you know, the actions of Jeff Knight spill over to the rest of the teachers.
But get.
But, yeah, and we definitely don't assume.
Give me credit for that.
Yeah, and, and it's like implied that that's the case, but it should also, if they're feeling, if they're feeling, you know, what you're saying, then, then that's, then that's terrible. And, and, you know, they definitely have the support of all of us.
Thank you very much for sharing that. I'm sure that means a great deal to you.
I would agree. Again, just a quick comment. I don't think any parent, at least anything that I've heard in the community, is targeting any teachers or not being supportive of the teachers. The cultural kind of peace and their morale, I can imagine, is unbelievably down based on, you know, a huge incident, another incident, turnover of leadership, I mean, the leadership alone, and I appreciate, you know, people stepping in to support and quickly trying to figure it out, but huge on teachers' shoulders, so.
And in parents.
But it's disheartening to think that they think that it's the parent community because no one is sharing anything but positives about the teaching staff.
And to your point, please share that with our teachers. They need to hear it right now. Don't you agree, Mr. Sullivan?
But I don't think it's the parents that they're hearing the pressure from, so.
But they need to hear it from the parents. Because they don't need to hear it from us. They don't need to hear, they need to hear it from our parents.
They do.
And they're hurting too right now. And, you know, they're.
They feel very vulnerable.
They do. And they need, they need our support. So if anybody could email out to the teachers and tell them that they have our support, that would be strongly appreciated.
And can I, I have one last thing.
Yep.
Jessica, I just want to make sure, like, in a lot of ways, as the school committee, we're the last to get information. We have to ask for the information. The information doesn't get to us on time. So I'm, I'm not trying to not, I don't feel as a group I'm speaking but for myself, not for the group, but I don't feel like we're not trying to answer your information, but like, you guys have information well before we do.
You have information that we don't have.
We don't have. So we're sitting here like, you're asking us questions about stuff we don't even have.
So if I asked you a question or another parent and had the information, why aren't you proactively asking for a copy of it?
We have.
We have, now that I got your email, asking for the information. But just, just the point is, I think we're happy to get the information we can get to you when we get to it and we're happy to share it and disseminate it.
I've asked for simple definitions of what neglect is. Can't get it.
But it's, it's, the point is, it's just.
So all I did was pick up the phone and call and I got lots of information. So I'm confused on.
I'm confused too. We were told you couldn't do that.
We're confused too, and I'm sure that Louise is confused. And our, our counselor is confused.
My notes says the people I talked to are at work, so I don't, I can't speak to what the person's name was tonight.
It's amazing because they. Okay, well.
It was very easily shared.
Yeah, I filmed it.
Interesting. That's very strange to us.
We were told that that was.
From several different places.
That's unbelievable to us. And as I said, to Louise and to counsel.
Yeah.
Because we've been asking for things for months and have received this much, zero.
So I think the confusing thing for, as a parent, is just to feel when, once we're able to make these phone calls and get information and then what we hear is it's an ongoing investigation, we can't comment.
Right.
It's very concerning and frustrating because you try to figure out, how do you, how do you keep that together?
It's concerning and frustrating for us too.
Right, as I said to you in my email.
Because if someone's saying it's a harm.
I know you're tired of hearing that response, but I'm tired of giving it. I would like to have some information to give somebody.
And but the people that we're speaking to say that's not accurate, that you know it's, it's not.
Well, that's, then we will revisit our requests.
Yeah. Revisit it. But like I said, we'll try to get the information out to you.
And when the people say, no, that's actually something they're hiding behind.
No.
It makes you wonder, well, where is.
There's really, to be honest, there's no one hiding from anything. There's certain things that you can say legally. I mean, it's, it's, we got to, we have to be concerned about lawsuits and that would hurt communities, that hurts special programs. We have to worry about things that are said because it'd be easy for us to throw some stuff out in public. You know, you can't use people's names and stuff because it would cost the district a lot.
Absolutely.
So we got to be very careful. But I can assume, believe me, there's nothing being covered up here. Because I would not let anything happen like that. I'm a parent first. That's all I'm saying.
None of us are trying to cover the facts.
Nothing, yeah. And, and, believe me, I would be.
When there's a finding against the district and against the principal.
The one thing that we did ask about was the finding against the district. And we were told that the district cannot be found negligent. I'm just.
Another question to ask.
I'm just, I'm just repeating, I'm just repeating.
Yeah, we got to ask them, that's what they say.
We've been told that the district can't be found, but then they. We've been told that the district can't be found, but then they go after individuals and do investigation in that regard. So, that's the information that we have.
But it sounds like you need to revisit.
And then the follow-up answer question I had is if a principal could be found neg- um, uh, what's that word?
Negligent.
Negligent. Neg- negligent. Neglect.
Neglect.
I said, then is it possible that a superintendent could be found negligent?
Yeah.
And, uh.
Of course, of course, but we have, we haven't even.
Yes, if there was a challenge against.
So, my question, I guess, um, if you're saying that you didn't have the information, so DCF, I was shared that they shared the information with the DA's office due to the school system being found negligent as their hands were done, as far as their steps. Um, and Desi was contacted, um, and a representative was doing an investigation. And again, my notes are at work, but I was given the name of the, um, contact at the department as well, so.
Did they notify who they were investigating? Did the department have notified them?
The school system, so that would fall under Louise and city, as well as the principal and the individual.
The Department of Education mentioned name indicating that?
I did not follow up with the Department of Education, I was given the name of who was given the investigation.
Right. Right.
Just, I'm very curious, at DCF, do you, do you know the name of the person to whom you spoke?
Not today, not tonight, because my, my notes are at work.
And they?
Can, can we get that information privately?
Can I just ask, no, I just wanna ask you, what questions did you pose to DCF exactly?
The very general questions, I'm a parent calling.
And asking what, what questions?
My understanding is that the school system was found negligent, please tell me your next steps that you do. And then she said, let me guess, you're calling from Cohasset. And she said, I only know that because we found two districts negligent in the history of the Department of Children and Families as far as records go back. So, to me, that was disgusting and extremely concerning, um, and I further asked questions. And it was not, uh, it was a pretty free-flowing information, and then I asked more specific questions about the next steps, what they do with it, is it DCF that furthers investigation? Is there police? And she said, I have to get back to you, and I.
Did she name any individuals who were the subject of neglect or abuse?
No, but I've seen those reports floating around the town.
Okay, all right, that was my question, DCF hasn't given you documents, so it's just.
DCF offered to give me the documents and I said I already had them.
Okay, so they offered to give you like full fifty-one B reports or the?
Okay, so this is, this is really your responsibility to go to, which like, but I feel like I'm on the hot seat.
No, 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 I'm asking you what, what. No, no, no. No, 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 not at all, no.
So, sorry if you got that impression.
DCF has shared information verbally with me of their processes.
Sure, yes.
So, I was told, based on negligence of the school system, Cohasset Public School System. They give the information to the DA's office as well as a representative from Desi, that's part of it.
Right.
Individuals that were found negligent, so principal, Jeff Knight, um, were then in, further investigated with the local DA and police department, so.
Can I ask, did they say the school system?
They did, and so does the report.
Okay, and you are not on the hot seat at all, we're just, we're confused.
No, no, I'm just curious, just, we're curious, that's all.
I just feel like I'm doing your homework and it's a little frustrating, so we would just.
No, not at all.
No, no, no.
No, not at all.
I was curious about your experience, that's all.
We've, we've requested, on more than one occasion.
We've requested that.
And like I said, I'm happy to kinda chime in, because I do this for a living, but it's really frustrating that I feel like, why don't you, especially as an attorney, know this information? So, I have had at the parent meeting to correct you on some things as well.
No, no.
Yes, as you and Louise stood there talking about mandated reporters being parents, yes, you had ill information. And now at this point, our district, taxpayers' money is now paying you continuously and you're still not knowing the steps, that's your job. Go investigate this.
I'm not saying we're not knowing the steps, I'm asking what your attorney might have.
I'm sorry, this isn't even about that, they're taking your advice, I've spoken to Jean several times, and said, your attorney should be doing this. That's what they're paying for, for you.
And I, I have to say that our attorney is doing her job.
But she's gotta vote her behalf.
If the information is not coming forward, then what are we to do?
That's your attorney's job to file.
Investigate, investigate, so, and they did file, huh?
And she has, she, she has filed.
The contact at, at Desi, who's, who is, uh, I spoke to was Quentin Dale.
Yeah, yep, that's his name, yep, that's his name.
Yeah, Quentin Dale.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thanks.
But I think this also affords opportunity, like, if if we're giving you stuff, you know, if we feel you're gonna use it, then we will give you more, it'll, it'll, it'll go back to being a community then. Like, it's, it'll stop being us versus you guys, but like, if it ends up being like, you know, we provide information and then months pass by and nothing's being acted on. I mean, first of all, you're right, this, we shouldn't be providing this, like, this is like insanely above and beyond.
Well.
You know, like, I, I, I have no skill sets similar to what Jessica has.
I, I can't answer that, Mr. Omron, I really, I have no answer about why we are not, we have not been able to get information when we have asked for it repeatedly. The superintendent has asked for it on multiple occasions, the attorney has asked for it on multiple occasions.
So, you have not been contacted by the DA's office or Quentin from Desi?
No.
I connect with, with Dale Quentin, I mean, no, Quentin Dale, as the legal representative for DESC.
For the, no.
Whenever a staff member is released or resigned under conditions, we, we are mandated to report.
Right.
That is my dealing with him, so I understand that you're saying that the documents are there, they absolutely are, because, um, Mr. Netz, documents are, because he's, anybody who's left the district. But I don't understand.
So, you were aware.
Aware of what?
Aware of what?
You, you just said that you spoke to Dale when.
No, I don't speak to Dale, I did not speak to Dale.
Not on this, not on this subject, but she does know who he is.
No, 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 no.
In general.
Generally, we do, I do routinely deal with him. When there is a release of a teacher for any reason, we do report that to DESC, that is our, our, my legal obligation.
And I, I need to clarify one misconception, or potential misconception. It's, it's not, it's not correct that DCF provided no information to this district, it did, but it, we provided information about an initial issue, not a subsequent issue, I just wanna make that clear, all right, all right.
Right.
Right, yeah, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, so you did not receive the information from November seventeen?
Correct, correct.
Right.
Is, has, has anyone raised the question of, of why was, um, Mr. Mike allowed to resign?
Okay, so.
Is this like a, a union comment issue, like, is, is, is it?
It's similar, why was he not fired? Uh, all right, again, this is just technically in the wambu jungle, but if you wanna look at this, this is statute that you have to follow in, I'm not gonna talk about this case in particular, but like, in general, when you're speaking of separating people from their employment, there is a union, and there also is a statute, chapter seventy-one, section forty-two, that talks about the process. There's an initial notice of intent, and then there's a final decision. Sometimes things happen between the initial notice of intent and a final determination.
Ten days.
Right.
Right.
So, ten days, so we're talking since last May, we're in, almost in December, so I am, I am more than aware of the process under chapter seventy-one. I was the vice president of our teachers' union prior to, so I am well aware of all of it.
Right, I know, giving that information to folks in this room will may not happen.
We're May, we're talking May. Right, but I'm, I'm saying, you're talking about a process of intent, the dismiss, the right to, um, you know, challenge the decision, all of these things, attorneys. That would be fine if we were in June, but this happened in May, we've had all of this time, we've had initial things go on. As far as, the criminal is one thing, that is separate, as far as a, a school system and, um, behavior that is un, you know, unacceptable in the professional world, in order to dismiss a teacher, you had plenty of information. Um, as you were talking about, in September, you were notified of different things, in July, you received the information from DCF. So, the intent to dismiss should have happened in July.
Yeah, why did it happen in July?
So, whether he resigned two days ago, that is what the information I heard, or two, two weeks ago, it, it obviously happens recently. The intent to dismiss letter should have been an investigatory meeting back in May and should never have gone on this long. So, that's part of my email.
Okay, thank you, thanks. All right, so we're gonna move along. Um, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the warrant.
Oh, no.
Yeah, and then we'll go back to the superintendent's report.
Sorry, I just. Appreciate your answers.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so, um, I have in front of me warrant nineteen dash O eight S, do I have a motion to approve the warrant?
Some.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, roll call, please.
I'm Paul Currie.
Hi, Barbara Steffan.
Hi, Jean Estino.
Hi, Ellen Mark.
Hi, John Martin. Sandy, I'm sorry.
It's okay, what if, might have followed the awards.
I'm looking, I keep thinking, I probably should have done something.
Okay.
Thank you, um, we have a new position in the district, as you know, uh, that we negotiated, that we, uh, we all agree we need it. And I, I don't wanna say she's overworked, because then the next negotiation will go so well.
She's working well.
She's working hard, and so I asked Sandy Crowe, she would, uh, give us a, an outline of some of the, the added, uh, benefits we have of a lead nurse or head nurse, um, and we're very excited, because I, it's always the person I can call and say, hey, is that great point person? So, thank you, thanks for coming.
Oh, it's my pleasure, so it would have been a little bit, like, a little while ago. So, thank you for approving this position, um, when I thought about what I needed to update you all on, it's really not, I don't feel like, I'm just driving the boat. So, captain of the boat, um, the staff, the nurses.
You're lovely with a pole and, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, no, it's my fault.
Um, the nursing staff that we have, it is just fabulous. When I counted up our years of experience, and kinda tells us our, all of our ages, but we have a hundred and fifteen years of nursing experience between the four of us. Um, and thirteen children between us, so, just a wealth of knowledge. So, when one of us, because we're all independent practitioners at each school, we don't have, when we worked in the hospital, they could say, hey, have you seen this before? What do I do here? We're, it's great, we can just call each other and, and figure it out, um, so everybody's wonderful, Judy Kelly and, and Katie, our newer, newest addition. And she's, she's been here a few years, so she's really not that new. But, um, fortunately for me, I job share, so I have this extra time, and we all try, throughout the years, we've all tried to get things done, but we've never been able to, because there just isn't time and we can't all meet together. Unlike teachers that have the common playing time, we meet after school once a month. And, um, one of the things that was under the job description was to increase the, um, professional development, and Patrick has worked with me doing that, which has been great. And again, sort of, you know, we don't really fit into handwriting for tears, or, you know, some of the other, um, uh.
Well, the tears part.
The tears part, yeah.
It's good, yeah.
Um, but just.
That's for the old tears.
I know, I know.
Yeah, the tears, just, uh, last week, we went to, um, seizure disorders in the schools, put on my children's hospital, but, um, as nurses, we have to go in the evening and, and we pay for our own professional development, so I'm not, not putting a plug in there or anything, but I'm just letting you know that, that's what we do over the years, so we go on our own time to these events. But Patrick will give us, um, you know, some leeway with some other professional development, uh, to do some things during the day. Um, but a few things that we, I helped with at the end, Ellen had started with Judy, um, and the, um, AD was to the AEDs, so we got those implemented and, um, installed throughout the district at the end of the summer, we returned the old AEDs. Um, I was able to do the, the bus training for, um, bus driver training with EpiPens and seizure disorders. And normally, that's one of the nurses that just tries to swish it in, but having this position, it afforded, um, some extra time. We got all of our health equipment calibrated this year, our scales up to date, um, I was able to go to the first nurse leader meeting out in Westboro, Mass, it was a full day meeting. And it was interesting, learned a lot, um, most districts, much larger than ours, have a full, uh, nurse leader position, um, where they don't have, you know, daily duties, so. Um, I don't know how many of those I'll be able to make, but, uh, I'll try to make some of them. Um, we're doing monthly nurse meetings, the first Thursday of every month. Um, one of the things that Louise was help, helped us secure was new software for the nurses, we haven't had it in sixteen years, so our old, um.
I thought it was a SNAP.
It was, and it's called SNAP. So, um, our old software was, uh, pretty static, and this one, it was great, almost every district in Massachusetts uses it. So, when we transfer, when someone transfers, it can go electronically, it's in the cloud, it's HIPAA secured, I don't know how it works, it just goes, um.
I don't mean to be flip, it's called a SNAP software.
SNAP, yeah, yeah, yeah. And actually, this, um, this Friday, we're having, um, we haven't been trained on it, we're just kinda bumbling through, so, we're having training this Friday, um, a webinar for a couple of hours to learn how to use the app, but, um. So, in the weeks that I don't have, uh, either like a, a, a meeting or training to do, I'll go to each of these schools. Um, so I've helped out with some of the mandated screenings at, at Deer Hill, Deer Hill's a very, um, heavy medical school for the past couple of years. Um, and all those students will be moving up to the high school, so she's, she's, uh, got a lot on her shoulders. Um, uh, one of the other things I have to do is, is help coordinate, um, overnight field trips and get nursing coverage for those, so we're working on those. One of the highlights, um, this year, because we didn't do flu shots for the staff last year, we coordinated with Mary Goodwin at, at the town, and we scheduled three, uh, flu clinics at each of the tech, at each of the schools and during staff meetings, which I don't know if everybody loved, but we pulled people out of staff, you know, during the staff meetings, we just wrote names up on the board, whoever wanted to come get their flu shot did, and I think we did a little over a hundred flu shots. And it was great having the coordination with, um, Mary Goodwin, she did all the ordering of the, the, um, the, um, depth, so we just implemented it at each school. Um, we're working on finishing the ICE policy, which will be done soon, and we'll bring it to you once it's done. Um, and then I've been, um, participating on the newly organized safety committee, so. There's a lot that we have, um, the nurses that we have out there, um, a little ambitious, I didn't realize how much time this would take, but we're, we're starting to knock off bits by bits, but, um, everybody's wonderful, uh, we're really lucky in our town to have the nurses that we do, um, and the experience that they have, they, they keep everybody safe and they do a good job. So, thank you for this position and I hope, um, hope it continues.
Thank you for taking this position.
Thank you, and, you know, it's wonderful to hear this, to know that all of this is happening and, um, you know, you're the unsung heroes, 'cause you do so much.
Well, if I don't go home and throw up on my shoes, my hair can tap. It's a good day.
Sure.
That besides the flu shots too, uh, you know, you have a nurse that does CPR, you have another one who jumps in and knows the SNAP program, and uh, when you put them together, the wealth, when you say the number appears, it's, it's the differentiated skill set.
Right, right.
That we have, and each nurse seems to have a specialty, and if we don't say it enough, then it will.
Oh, I'll, I'll let them know, I'll let them know, all right, thank you.
I do have a question, Sandy, sorry, and it's kind of a tag team with Patrick.
Okay.
As you know, SEL is such a, a big focus in the district, and Patrick's worked so hard on professional development, and, um, maybe more so in the elementary schools. You must see kids that come in that don't have a medical, um, situation going on.
Absolutely.
But have more of an emotional, and, and so, does that, does SEL training tie into the nurses at all, or is there a different segment of it, or I don't know?
Um, well, yeah, I mean, they're, they're providing so much support socially, emotionally, to our students, so yes, absolutely does.
Yeah.
Um, and, you know, we, as, as Sandy said, we work hard to coordinate our, our trainings so that they're getting the most for what they need.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
We also have, um, from McLean Hospital, we have, um, a nurse consultant who comes out, she just canceled on us for the last professional development, so we're rescheduled for February.
Okay, cool.
Yes.
Yeah.
Dr. Love, great.
Uh, yeah, Julie Love, from McLean's.
Yeah.
Um, so, and she, we did have a social, emotional, um, topic to go on.
Okay.
We've just done, um, depression and anxiety, so.
Okay.
So, really lead, they're, to, to fully insert, they're really leaders in helping with the training.
Yeah. Because sometimes the, the nurse is like the first place a kid would go, a younger, a younger student, you know, the virtual hugs and kisses, you know, not the real ones, but.
Absolutely.
Right.
I have to say, Sandy has the running record for running with the, with a waistcoat in her hand.
One of the, um, I almost forgot to tell you this, one of the advantage of, of this new SNAP program, I can, um, put in how many, it's a little staggering, how many visits, um, we've seen per school. it's a little staggering, how many visits we've seen per school and the totals up to now, which are over two thousand visits in just the first three months, which is really high.
That's for all schools?
For all three schools.
Wow. Thank goodness it's not one.
Does that include like regular med visits?
It does include med visits. And I will have to say, it's probably a bit higher because we're not proficient at using the system yet. We have to develop templates that make it a lot quicker. So, a lot of times, kids may come in that, you know, the, the outage in nursing, if you don't document it, you didn't do it.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we try as hard as we can to document every single kid. But, you know, sometimes I could take fifty kids in a day at the Oscars. And I know Katie, and Judy. Judy's, Judy's ratio is very high at the high school.
I have to say that when my oldest daughter was at the Oscars, when she first was enrolled there, I discovered a couple of months in that she was visiting the nurse every day. So, I called the nurse, it was Joan Kerrigan at the time, and I said to her, is, is something wrong? She said, oh, no, it's just normal kindergarten adjustments. They just love to go and visit the nurse. And I have a friend from high school who is a, an elementary school nurse in Georgia. And she posts some of the funniest, cutest stories on Facebook that you would ever, people keep asking her when she's going to write her book. So, a lot of that is the fun visits. Some of it is the, the touchy feely visits that the kids just need a little extra help. And some of it is real medical issues. So-
Yeah, kids are coming to school sicker and sicker with, you know, more complex medical issues-
Right.
-than we've ever seen. So-
Yeah. And probably more working parents too, who's, who send their kids to school and maybe don't realize when they could put them on the bus that they weren't feeling perfect.
It happens all the time.
But the kids want to go to school. So, it's kind of a double sword.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a question?
Jen has a question.
Sorry, Jen.
We're all in. I had a quick question. Have you seen any increased nurses' visits because of baby name? Are there sort of like, or would you-
My knowledge level stops at seven. So, I haven't.
Okay. Have, has the, has the high school nurse seen?
Um, not that she's mentioned to me.
I mean, I'm sure it's hard to attribute, you know, every visit to something, but just with the increase in baby name?
I'll ask for when we have, we have our meeting on Friday. So, I'll ask for them. But, you know, we're concerned. So, I don't, you know, hopefully, nobody up till seven is doing that. But it's scary.
Did she get up now?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No worries.
Thank you.
Not that I think you need them. I just want you to see them. As you know, several years ago, actually it was before I became superintendent, we were privileged to be in a pilot program with Marshfield and actually it started in Marshfield, Sichu and several other districts in piloting this referral program called Interface. And Interface started at William James College. And it was originally Rhode Island. It's now located in Newton. And the person who started that was Dr. Margaret Hannah. And I met Margaret Hannah about three, three, four years ago when we had a collective meeting in Marshfield. And it's a referral service. And then I realized how much the guidance department, particularly the middle high school, was using the service. And so, I realized that we have very little information out there on this wonderful service until we almost lost it last year, where the state was funding this program, this pilot program. And when Governor Baker redlined the funding for Interface. And it's always in a district that dedicates itself to important endeavors that we find ourselves fortunate and cohesive. Chris Senior and I had a conversation and obviously school community was involved. And we said, you know, we are missing half the year. The funding is going to stop on the new budget. And Chris said, we'll take care of it. So, he did. And we later worked through the long range planning committee through last year to say, okay, this is an important piece. We can't just always keep it in the school budget. How can we do this? And it is now a separate line item on the town side. So, it is here to stay. And that I see great big leap forward. Of course, after we okayed that, which is a great thing, the governor reinstated it. So, we now have an extension on a free cap year. But what I realized when I went to a, a meeting with Margaret Hannah and Nija Riley, who's, who's published in Anxiety and Depression in Children, Margaret Hannah and Nija Riley have become friends for me. And they work at the Freedman Center or have, have developed the Freedman Center for Child and Families. And they work with schools. And they also work with Safe Harbor and they work with Barbara Green, who we also know on South Shore Connections. So, when I went to the meeting a month or so ago, I realized that it, we don't publicize this enough. And it is a service that's not only available to our children in the schools, but it's also available to our employees. It's available to our Boston students. And it's available to any resident in Cohasset. And it's invaluable. If anyone has ever tried to secure counseling services for someone, usually it's a multiple call. And it's, you know, do you take my insurance? Oh, no. Do you have any patients? Sure, I do. It'll be four months. I worked with one of the administrators just a week or so ago, and we were working to get some counseling for a student. And the parent came in and said, well, I have an appointment in four weeks. It's been, you know, it's been a week ago. I made an appointment for four weeks. And we said, well, here, you know, you need to call a referral service. And their maximum time is fourteen days. And it takes insurance. So, if I could go through it, I really felt that I wanted you to understand how valuable it is and hopefully, my next step in, in working with this valuable service. I, I have to give credit to Margaret Hannah about the slides. I adjusted them for our class, but they do come out of her work and Nija's work. Where do I point it?
At the computer.
At the computer. Okay. That's okay. William James College Freedman Center for Child and Family Development is a center of excellence that promotes mental health and wellness. And the prevention, the prevention is the big mental health disorder where they partner. They have so many pieces to their establishment. It's phenomenal. It's to provide resources and referral guidance. It's that referral guidance that is so important to appropriate mental health and wellness services. The work is with children, families, adults, mental health professionals. And that's the connection that's really important. And it works with towns and communities. And those towns and communities are also schools. This is their process. The first thing they do is if I am in need of a service, what I would do as a family member is say, okay, I know that my child needs this service. And I know that we need it. How do I find someone? We usually go through our primary care physician or someone, and then we start calling. However, if the emotional piece is there, that calling becomes difficult. It's almost kind of, I don't know how to navigate this. What Interface does is when we pick up the phone and we call the number on the postcard, we get a live person. And that person says, I understand what you're needing. Get, let me have some information. Let me guide you through matching you with a counselor. What is, what do you see in your family? What are, what are the symptoms? What are their interactions? How does that affect your family? What are you looking for? What kind of counsel would work better? Female, male, group, what? Anything that goes with it. And the important piece that they have is what insurance coverage or coverage do you have? Because many counselors only take cash or some kind of payment on site or, or very limited health coverage. So, they take all of that in. That is the intake. And when they come back, they, they give the family one, two or three options of counseling services that A, service what they're looking for, are appropriate to what has been given, that will take that insurance and most importantly, available. And usually within our area. One of our very popular providers is here in Cohasset, actually. What they do in a few days is they call back the family and say, so, how did it go? And if the family says, I didn't call yet, they'll say, well, you know, do you still need it? What are you looking for? It's just kind of nudges. It will also say, how did it go? And if the family member says, eh, didn't care for it, you know, I don't know if it's such a match, they will find someone else. They will keep working until they have that provided for you. They will also close it at that point when the family has, has established a counseling. And Margaret Hannah found when she started this, oh, I don't know, ten, fifteen years ago, that, that was the missing piece in mental health, that people didn't know how to navigate getting not only quality care, but care that, that, that addressed the very specific needs that a family or individual had. Their referrals are matched to specialties, need availability, particularly insurance, also location. Sometimes if a, a family doesn't have access to transportation, it has to be in the city or it has to be in the town. It has to fit the school schedule. We get the data every year. Last year, I believe that in about six months, there were eighty-seven referrals from the middle high school alone. The town of Cohasset had, I forget, over a hundred, close to two hundred uses for this, this service. What is not known is, what needs to go out there is something that Brain Tree put together that I really, really like. These are their core values. But Brain Tree has a video out that has a, a video clip for each of the departments in town. And they're the head departments. So, the head of DPW, the library, the town manager, the nurses, the school committee, everyone. And there's a clip that goes on their website that says, if you need referral, you have to call. And, and it goes through the whole spiel that advocates for this. And, and that's where, when I went to that meeting and did share with the Brain Tree, that I discovered that we needed to do more of that, that we needed to put that out. And that's why I put it on the agenda. The other thing too is that what happened in, for me, there were a number of people from various districts. I found we are one of the most fortunate districts. Because they were saying, one district said, I go out with Hatton and ask for a grant. Another said, well, I ask for contributions from every department in town. Another said, well, I have a fundraiser. And they said, well, what do you do? And I said, our, um, our, our town doesn't come online. And we, we are so fortunate. The cost is about, I think it's eight thousand dollars per half year, sixteen thousand total. We were so fortunate to be part of it, the, uh, the pilot. But its success is phenomenal. We believe to empower callers. They, they really do not, uh, they're such wonderful people. They're just really awesome. They talk about empowering people to make their decisions, but keep the wellness and mental health as part of the necessary wellness of a person. They, they're founded on a, a nine, a two thousand seventeen study. It was their last. And their average appointment time is fourteen days. And if anyone has ever tried to get counseling services, that, that's just about record time. They founded very, very successfully. It's a point through a process and, and having an emotional piece of household, first word, of family. It's, it's that trying to survive and do and feel and try. This takes all of that out of there and helps us when we navigate the wellness process. But they also do continuing education programs for professionals. We are looking into, they have a program that will certify. And we have looked at sending three educators at some point. We're still looking at it to finish the certificate program in psychology in, in the school building. And as you know, Margaret Hannah and Nija Riley are also to me consulting and collaborative at no cost at this point in life, including the school, the organization. One of our largest conversations with Margaret and Nija was the culture of our school when we have gone through trauma, which is basically what we've gone through, on working and, and making it well again. And it definitely advocates on the state, the legislative, legislative levels. They, we also, they have a collaborative support. They work very closely with South Shore Youth Health Connection. They have been in, I believe in, in Kingdom. And they are still there working collaboratively. They provide, they, they do all, religious leaders, law enforcement, all of that. They also work, if you're familiar with, Sichu has FACS. We do not. They are that referral service with South Shore Health, put at the no for county DAs. And they also partner with Safe Harbor. So, this is how it works. That's where we are. And this is where I place a great deal of the faith that we can go through and, and be well again. Our Cohasset School Committee works with Interface. We have a close relationship with Safe Harbor. And we also have a great connection with South Shore Youth Health Connection. If you follow the Blackboard Connections, I've been sending the, the newsletters from South Shore Health. But families can actually subscribe to that. It's at no cost and it goes to them weekly. It has great resources. I just sent out that there's a great speaker that is at no cost through South Shore Health Connection on media and depression and anxiety in adolescent that is hard to find such a speaker that is coming to South Shore on December fifth. So, there, there are many, many great things happening. And I wanted to share it. What I have done is the postcards are, are not, we cannot manufacture our own, although we can, we can change them with their approval. But I have left some of these. I'm going to leave them on the table here. They can be found in the learning commons. They're at the front desk of every school. What I've found is we weren't, we weren't giving these out. My next project is to try to get some posters and some publicity out to all of the departments. And I have worked with the person who did the video for Brain Tree and did get the cost because that's the most important. And who did the videotaping and how that, that involved in the script. So, Tanya, who also works for the Freeman Foundation, has been very good about wanting to find the slides, but also giving me the script and the information. So, that is, is going to be one of my other missions for this year. I did want to present that. It's a very, it's a valuable service.
Sophie, have, yes, hi.
Of course, I have questions. Um, will the town support maybe a table or at the health and recreation fair that they have in the springtime?
Yes, we can.
You know, that would be a great, because this is a town service. It's not just a school thing. And I, you know, I think it's remarkable. You're taking, you know, stewardship of this. But I would hope that, you know, maybe Mary Goodwin's office or, because they're very focused on wellness and have received awards and things like that at town hall. So, it would be great to help, you know, get them in and help.
I do want to say too, that, you know, the focus on wellness is very big. And I have to give Dr. Sullivan some credit for this well organization for this Friday, which I'm going to give him a little space to talk and, and give some information on what he has planned. But we also have mindful moments. I, they're advertised early in the morning. They were this morning for students. And I guess it has been quite well attended where Nina Berkelbach does some of the, the mindful breathing and quiet reflection to start the day. But I had also worked with the Wellness Committee and, and IIA so that, uh, town insurance, so that we can have one for the staff as well. So, we're working on that. And I'm trying to get a better relationship, collaboration, not relationship, I have a great relationship with the Wellness Committee on which I sit with Judy Collins and, and many of the town people, Bob Zulia, to get more of some of those activities into the schools because they are such great, great programs. There is a program called Quizify. If you are an insurance employee in the town, you go on Quizify and take the ten question quiz. And if you take two, there's one a month. If you take both of them, after two months, there is a twenty-five dollar gift card coming your way. If that's incentive. I have learned from them. Of course, I always take it twice because I want that hundred percent. But ninety. But it's such incentive, so I'm trying to promote some of that. Patrick, if you want to speak a little bit about wellness, since we have.
Can I just share, I believe we have this in my town as well. They will come and do two presentations per two years.
We've already had one, that's.
Okay, but I'm just saying, like, at the town level, to make sure that the other agencies are are, because it sounds like you guys are doing a lot, but they're pretty tough, the other ten, the agency is up to.
Thank you.
We just started, so Cohasset was one of the, Safe Harbor, we remember, and came to, and I went to.
Thank you. It's a, it's a great service.
So yeah, specifically about our PD, we've got a full day professional development day on Friday. And it's designated for social emotional learning and wellness. As you recall, I presented to you that we've covered the five social emotional competencies that are from Castle, which is the Club of Academic and Social Emotional Learning. Those competencies are self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, responsible decision-making, and relationship building. One of our goals this year, it's a hefty goal, is to operationalize those competencies within our buildings. So the social emotional learning PD attends to that with Deer Hill having their responsive classroom overview. Responsive Classroom is one of the programs that is recommended by Castle as a current and effective social emotional learning program. So they have representatives from Responsive Classroom coming in and working with them for a full day training. Ausgood had a similar training last year, and we were able to send some Ausgood educators over the summer to be fully trained in that. More deeply trained in that, hopefully, yeah. We also have teacher wellness as one of our goals. And we use that metaphor of the oxygen mask. If you get an airplane, you know, they say you have to put it on yourself before putting it on the child. And that's really a pretty good metaphor for social emotional learning, where we know that teachers who attend to their own wellness do a better job, not only for themselves, but for their students. And there, there's been studies that showed their their anxiety, the student's anxiety drops when a teacher's attending to wellness. So we have Jackie Bryan, who is a medical professional. She's a current contributor to our, I should say, a, she contributes often to NECN in health and wellness. You may have seen her, if you look up Jackie Bryan, you'd say, hey, I've seen this person. She's a fabulous speaker who already worked with our leadership, worked with Deer Hill. And she's going to talk to teachers at Ausgood and the middle high school in the morning about their own wellness. How to attend to their wellness, how to work together to make sure that they can help each other increase their wellness opportunities. And then we have a two hour window where we've worked with the social emotional learning team to organize some wellness activities. Amongst them, we're actually highlighting the Mister Rogers video, if anybody's seen it, it's called Won't You Be My Neighbor? Fantastic social emotional learning film. That's a gentleman who definitely encompassed all five learning competencies. And we're going to have a discussion on that regarding, you know, what can we take from that that we can apply to our, to our work and our lives. We also have, we have some therapy dogs that are coming in for the staff, for the the middle high school staff. This is all within a two hour window, mind you, but it's an important two hours. And we have some other activities happening during that time. Then in the afternoon, for Ausgood and and the middle high school, we have an integration of the social emotional competencies into their their lessons. And in this case, it's a showcase of them at the middle high school. And for Ausgood, it's a showcase of what they're doing with Responsive Classroom. So social emotional learning is allowed at well in Cohasset. And all of these opportunities are really benefiting our students, so very happy about it. And of course, Ms. Sandy talked about the staff training happening with the nurses. So a full day, and should be really good day, the staff's very excited about it. Sorry, I made it a little long.
Thank you.
I don't do short recas.
What did I give you there?
I don't know. You got the mic?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, no, thank you. I I can only say, good job with the wellness, especially with the teachers. Just not only, that is my background, I can tell you, every dollar you spend, you get five dollars back in productivity. You get less absenteeism, you get more productive, you get better decision makers. And there's so many studies that have shown, and for you to bring this up and and focus on wellness is huge, especially with the teachers, because it does keep them, if they're in a good mood, the kids are in a good mood, it's just all good. I just wanted to tell you, keep that up, that's wellness. Appreciate those supportive words and absolutely. Really, I have to thank the social emotional learning team. There are sixteen individuals from across all, all of the schools who really worked to create this PD with the with the leadership team. So it's it's a very collaborative effort. Thank you. Thank you.
So that's all awesome, wonderful. There's still a group going to.
Oh, yes, thank you. Okay, so I forgot. Associate Principal Gashi would be hitting the internet right now. We have the whole sixth grade team going and a foreign language teacher going to Norton Middle School, working with Nils. Nils recommended that we take a look at Norton. And we've worked, we've worked with the principal there, and superintendent, the Mrs. Worked with the superintendent to facilitate this trip. The director of Nils himself is going, Bill Downey. And it's going to be nice, it's going to give us some perspective on what we can do to make us authentic. We're not really like them, but we can see what is successful there and what we may be able to take and make it implement into our middle school authentically. I think it's a good match, and and the principal there sounds like he's full of energy and and great culture builder. So I think it's going to be a great opportunity for us to to learn and collect.
Are there seventh and eighth grade teachers not going then, or is it just the sixth grade?
I think, I, you know what, I have to check again.
It's just sixth.
I think, I think it's just sixth grade, but the opportunity will exist to do this, make it again next year, if it goes well. So this is Friday, right? This is all Fri- it's all happening, everything I just mentioned, the last time, it's happening Friday.
And he has no energy for it. Thank you, very welcome. On that note, you have my goals. I don't want to read them to you, I thought that you might want to have read them, and if you have any questions.
The, thank you. How do we do with the contract with the custodians? Did we fulfill that with the study from the?
The custodian contract was completed before the study.
No, I know that, but we were doing the valuation on how many that we should have, correct? That's been done?
The study has been completed, yeah, we've seen the draft, the copy of the report. And we met with an administrator, and the facility department told you where to go next, I mean, a bunch of recommendations. So we were just giving some factual feedback, you know, so the consultant, just, there was a couple of things that we just need to correct in the report. Should probably be finalized, and then we'll be able to share it.
Because we're supposed to get that back to them by the fall, right?
We do have it, we need to just kind of summarize what the needs are.
Can I get a copy of that?
Yep. I think we'll all get a copy of that once it's finalized.
Yeah, he just, they had, he just asked for some corrections, yeah, no.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, good talk.
Yeah.
That's good.
And we've been talking to the town about where to go next, and then more options.
Sorry.
Does anybody have any comments?
I have a question about the ESP evaluations, who generally evaluates the.
The principal evaluates, the principals.
The principals.
They have an evaluation on baseline as do teachers, it's just different, it's a different town. All right then.
I don't have questions.
I don't either.
Yeah, no.
No, I think it's great.
Wow, thank you very much. The next thing on the agenda is the calendar. I think we we had looked at this once before. And we tabled it in order to look at it, and I'm not, I do not remember the exact reason why, other than.
Me getting a pain, so.
I don't know if there was a consideration about where the half days and the full days were. I think there may have been a question about April being the half day, full day, and then the day off. But I think we put them there so that should we have a terrible winter in February and March, as we did last year, we had some days to stuck play.
That said, excuse me, the Blizzard Bags, did you need that information, or did you already get that?
I would like that information from you. I have some information, but it's.
Because that's on the app. But I'll send it to you.
That's fine, if you just send me where to go.
Okay.
Yes, that committee's meeting another week or so, yes.
Because you have a meeting soon. December.
Send those names up, I think it's December twelfth.
Okay, I'll, I'll send it to you tomorrow.
Great, thank you.
I didn't come up with any other recommendations, and I was the one who held this up, so I'm not going to impede you any further.
All right, so.
And they counted correctly, they counted them three times.
Excellent.
Yes, thank you.
Very good. Okay, so to that end, could I have a motion to approve the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty Cohasset Public Schools Calum? Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. The staff will be very happy to be able to plan their two thousand twenty vacation.
And I'm, sorry, we're on a finance.
Yes.
Thank you.
I have to exit.
Do you have a quest, any questions on that?
No, I don't, I just didn't want to offend Michael, that I'm on a finance.
I have to exit, wow.
No, me too.
I did spend a couple hours with Budget Finance Committee this week, so. Thank you very much, sorry.
Want to see you this weekend? Oh, that's good. Thank you.
We didn't even get to the goal, to the minute yet.
So I'll probably see Alex.
Yeah, you need to see Alex, he's up a little.
All right, so, I just, so, I'll be quick, I mean, well, the biggest change really from the meeting is. That's all right, so the biggest change from last month's report is we've encumbered all of the known district tuition and transit, our district transportation costs. So one of the things we're trying to do is be more disciplined, that I can cumber, expect the, expect each other we know about, it's going to happen, but we pay. You know, we've been committed to pay somebody for some student's tuition, then we should encumber those funds, because that puts them aside and holds them, gives us a better picture of where we're going to end up. So we can cover all those funds, which I don't think we've done at this point last year or previous years. So it just gives a kind of, gives a different look to, if you compare it, it's like it's going to be hundreds of thousands of dollars different from where we were at this time last year, just because we've encumbered those funds, we've created purchase orders, which just puts aside funds for our district tuition, which says, which we would have had to do anyway, but it just holds it and just practice.
It gives a, gives you a clearer picture.
Yeah, especially about something like tuition, which is moving, and change needs so much, it's really good to sort of put a line in the sand and say, okay, this is where we are, and this is how it looks.
How does all of that affect the reserve fund, the special reserve?
So that, so that doesn't affect the reserve fund, so that will, so that will come to that, yeah.
Because it was, it's on the warrant.
So, yeah, so what is on the warrant is to put money into the reserve fund. So the town was putting twenty five thousand dollars into the reserve fund.
That was the twenty, that's the twenty five thousand that we turned back at the end of last fiscal year. Got it, okay.
Right, and it's on the agenda for the school committee comments section?
No. Sorry.
For us to approve it so that when we, when we get up at, if we get up at town meeting, it it states that we're, we've recommended that transfer.
Okay.
So, so that is a source of funding that should we need it, if we're not able to afford all the tuition and transportation out of this per operating budget this year?
Yep.
We can go, we can, we can first come to you and then disely to ask for, to access that funds to pay for those costs. So right now, so we, so in order to, so when we encumbered all those funds, we put some of them in Circuit Breaker. So you know, we have Circuit Breaker, and that pays for some of our district tuition, so we have encumbered, what, four hundred and, four hundred and seventy six thousand dollars of tuition to come out of Circuit Breaker. A, we were also a hundred and thirty thousand dollars over budget on our district transportation. So we, so we moved, we transferred funds from our district tuition, which is, you know, the other side of the colony, into the transportation line. And we're able to do that because we were using Circuit Breaker to pay for some of that tuition. So, you know, it's a lot of, just trying to cover the costs with the funds we have, that's basically what we're trying to get, going to get where we are. So, you know, on transportation, our district transportation tuition, we are, we, you know, we still have some money left. If you know, it shows sixty thousand dollars between what's left in Circuit Breaker and what's left in the operating budget. And, you know, as you know, this is an area that fluctuates throughout the year, so we, Mary and I talk about it formally, or if you check in where we are. Yeah, I mean, still, the other area, the other area of the, of this, the special education costs are in district costs, which are higher, medical and therapeutic services, which is another area I'm working with, Street Services Director, and that's something we'll come back to at the future meetings. But that's the big, that's the one I wanted to highlight. Is there any, are there questions on the operating budgets?
I don't have any questions. Do Ella does though.
Shocking. No, I mean, I, I, I think even with the encumbrance, I mean, we're only a few percentage points over where we were last year.
Yeah. Yeah.
And the personnel lines look good.
Yeah.
They, they look like where they should be, so that's good news.
Yeah.
Some of the expense lines are high and, you know, relative, relative to last year and relative to other schools, I think Deer Hill is a little on the high side.
Yeah.
We're, school committee expenses were on the high side compared to last year, but I think we know why. So what's the status right now of spending?
So we have, we have put a spending, not quite, I mean, as we call this, a spending freeze, but really it's a restriction on expenditure, because we still continue to pay for buying things, so we're not really closing on expenditure, but just really restricted expenditure to what is absolutely necessary for the ongoing, you know, safety and education of students. So when we need materials in order for courses to run, we're still buying materials. But we are, we have really been just on expenditure until, you know, a thankful foreseeable future.
Okay.
So then, sorry, Ella.
No, that's settled.
On revolving grants summary, a, everything here looks fine. I think there's a, there's a permit grant. We have a, we're over budget there, but we're expecting funds to come in for that grant. Also, the, you know, there's two lines, the forty two and forty three. As the fort, we can use some of those, some of the funds that are currently in forty two to offset deaths in forty three. And this IDA and Title I, that's just us, you know, we spend it, then we get it back from the state, and we can, we'll just.
Right, right.
A, after school care, so that's, you know, the, the, the before and after school program that the town ran through, in, with us in the school building at the start of the year, they collected the financial fees, but we paid salaries, so they're, honestly, to me, they're going to transfer, I think they might have already done, actually transferred the fees over to cover that, so that more readily paid.
So that goes to zero, yeah.
Yes, that goes to zero. Like, they essentially, they are going to transfer, transfer it over exactly, if not exactly how much we spent. So that will go to zero. The grand placement fees, that's, this is, this is my fault. So I, we, we were just sort of, we moved, so advanced placement fees were being processed through student activities, which is not strictly speaking appropriate uses to activities, so I moved it over to have its own revolving account. Much better, much more appropriate use. And I just think we just need to now move some of the funds that are left in student activities to cover those costs.
Thank you.
So it will also be evolved. Any comments on that?
I would just comment that maybe we'll, after we get through the budget cycle, the budget and finance, we should really take a look at the school kindergarten and the preschool, well, maybe not the preschool so much, but the kindergarten revolving account.
Yes.
Because we're going to get to a point.
Because we're gonna get to a point where it's not gonna be as self-funding as it has been.
Yeah.
And we're gonna have to figure that out sooner than later, 'cause it's been declining month after month, year over year.
And I think we have the fees on the schedule, just all the fees.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To review, I think that's part of that too.
So.
Yeah, well, we just raised them last last year, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. So that, yeah, so one thing, so we have on the co- the school committee calendar to review fees, we have a standing item to to review fees, so what we've put together is a list of all the fees
Yeah.
that are currently charged, and I would love to have is a kind of to go along with that sense of how much each program cost, each program that fee relates to costs versus and what's paid by the fee versus what's paid at the operating budget, to give you a sense of, you know, the impact of the fee, so that would apply to kind of our as well.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other questions?
And.
No.
And then, and then very quickly, just on the budget, so A we are we have progressed with preparation of the budget, so A the superintendent and I and
Great.
and A Mary Buchanan, we met with all the principals and reviewed all their budgets and Ellen was all clear, and A we are now going to the next step of looking at, now we have all the budget requests from principals and directors, kind of consolidating all that information and applying as well with our A salary budgets to see where that comes out, which we've got around even the budget finance committee in a couple of weeks to review with our time.
Very good.
That's all great.
Yep. Says bus maintenance update, but there wasn't a.
Oh, yes, there wasn't, yeah, sorry, yes, uh the bus maintenance fourth is pretty close to the actual, I think it's act- it might just be a couple of numbers.
There wasn't one.
There wasn't one, yes.
Oh, and the mileage?
Yeah, the the mileage is right.
That'll never.
You think there's a mistake, mileage?
Or maybe it's at the end.
Where's the?
Oh, you went there looking at all the mileage.
I'm a mileage girl, I got a lot of miles on me.
I am.
Great, good.
So.
I'll send you a note.
Yeah, definitely. I think I was going through the mileage, so if there's a mistake, please people let me know uh where and, but you can see, so what I've done is I've concluded where we are at the same point two thousand eighteen as a comparison, as you can see, we are like we've spent twice as much more than
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
than we had at the same time last year, and that's the tire replacement and exhaust we talked about A couple of months ago.
And that's 'cause we have the buses longer than what we anticipated, so, yeah.
Yes, exactly.
Right, right.
Yeah, so and and it is offset because our lease costs are less, 'cause we're still running the lease, which will be most expensive, so over although overall I guess probably net savings A so yeah, so.
Yeah. Our labor and parts reimbursed.
Next up, yeah.
So when and when we lease, we're gonna be leasing new ones, so right, obviously, so we won't see them, we won't see them.
Yeah, yeah. There were there were a couple of um bus repair fees in this in this requirement, and when I looked at it, I thought if we if those buses were gone, we wouldn't have to pay these fees.
Yeah, pull one on.
You have to pull one, oh, why do you want to send these like, gee, gee.
There were a couple of bus repairs that would have not been happening had the buses gone away, so.
Oh. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
How how's that going, have you got have you guys close to a, is anyone gonna come down to the town or?
So we are A the vendors kind of dragging their feet a little bit, so we are f- I've been in touch with them today and said, look, it's never ever, so 'cause we do have another vendor we could, I mean, it's slightly more expensive, but if we can't get anywhere we're at lower vendor, then
Right.
we're gonna have to try and go to the the next, the second.
We got till January, right?
We have, yeah, and the so the current vendors nets and they've agreed that to let us keep the buses until we don't need them anymore. So just, you know, we'll just keep, we'll just do month to month extensions of that lease until we can, but I don't want them very much longer, so we're really, so we're really trying to get them
No, no, no.
No, absolutely not.
uh to the table, we just have to agree the lease contract, so that's what's just taking some time.
And when do you think that they will come forward with that?
Friday.
Friday, okay, so there is a deadline on it, great, okay.
Friday. Yeah.
And I'm not crazy, it's not in my packet, the bus.
Oh.
So, that's fine.
Okay.
Ellen did the deep dive on that one.
I.
So we're right here in red, baby.
Getting in trouble, I'm.
Oh. Actually, you know, I know, I started doing it, Michael, when we started with the lease, 'cause we because the runs weren't equitable and we had had buses like running almost twice the mileage and, you know, in the leased fleet.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, somewhere twice and and it I was just like, okay, well, this is crazy, 'cause if the mileage isn't equitable, then the driving in it isn't equitable and.
The way I take a bus, you know, but yeah.
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 So.
So we've, so I've, so.
But now it's a habit.
Yeah, so I've like I've mapped it, so I've got graphs of all mileages, I'm looking at to make sure they're right, so and I've gone through this with Missy, I'm like, Missy, why is this higher? And she's like, someone's using it more my coke, get off my piece, so.
What do you think?
Okay, okay, so next is school committee comments and communications, and the first item on here is the transfer of special education stabilization fund in the amount of twenty five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And as I said, if we could have a motion to recommend that amount, we transfer and second it, then um we'll be ready to go for a special town meeting in December. So do I have such a motion?
So moved.
So do I have a second, a second, okay. Uh all in favor, roll call this.
Aye, Paul Curry.
Aye, Gina Stino.
Aye, Ellen Mark.
Aye, Jen Madden. Great, so um just a technicality here, since um Barbara wasn't here, and I know it's too late because the warrants are are printed, but can we say five, zero, we voted for that or?
She wasn't here for the, she wasn't, but we can we can mention that one member was not present for the vote, that's that's not wrong.
Okay. Okay, you know how that is, it's nice to have um.
It's it's. You can say it's a unanimous vote for the members present.
Okay.
Yep.
We don't need to say who was here or not here, call her out.
You love it. Yeah, no, no, it's it's just, you know how it looks when you s- what you want to, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, well. Right, you 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 want, right, right, but you'll notice like on advisory committee, 'cause we have nine members, they all don't go to all the meetings, so some votes are seven, zero, some are, you know, nine, zero, some are two, it's whoever.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, and this one would be four, zero, which is, it's not like somebody voted against it.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
So, so, um does anybody have any reports that they wanna share?
Sure, so.
Thanksgiving meeting.
I I did not go. Thanksgiving meeting?
No, the Thanksgiving um Hall of Fame is one of them.
I did not go.
No?
Did not go.
No, well, there was a lot of stuff on Facebook about it, pictures and looked like a great celebration, some interesting characters.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Nominees.
Nominees, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, um we did have budget and finance, Michael mentioned that, and um what we will, so speaking of reserve fund, um when when the our policy was originally written, um originally we were a stabilization fund, which required a town meeting vote to withdraw to to deposit and withdraw from, and then the law changed and we could do a reserve fund, which only requires a vote of the school committee and the board of selectmen, and we put a policy together, which was quite extensive beyond the scope of the requirements of the law, with uh ceiling, fund ceilings, fund floors, uh account numbers that we would plan budget against and show overages against in special education, very specific, um mostly to um at that point in time satisfy advisory committee who felt that we were just hoarding money to spend, quote, willy-nilly, which is a very new and upcoming financial term, no, no. So um so we had, so it was re- it was restricted that we would have a a target fund floor of a hundred thousand dollars, and it was restricted that um we would not spend more than three hundred thousand dollars um in any two consecutive years. And that if the target fund floor was not met, that the select or the town manager of the schools would work together to figure out a way to reestablish the fund. Long story short, Barb, Michael and I went over the policy, uh and will get for the next meeting a draft for everyone's approval to look at some changes in the language that make it still very well defined, but a little less restrictive, so that we have the opportunity to uh withdraw funds as potentially needed. So that will come up, um we worked on based off um the budget book that Michael has put together for all of the staff, for all the the leadership, um is phenomenal, I love it. Um and they all are re- doing their budget requests in the same format, which is really helpful, and the items are much more well-defined and articulated in terms of instructional supplies or textbooks.
Oh, that's awesome.
So you can really, and I appreciate the invitation to go, I found it very beneficial to hear directly from the building leaders what their wishes are at this very first pass, so when we get down to brass tacks, I have the background, you know, I feel like I have the background to 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 work through the budget, it was really great, um and with a cover page, so then what we did in budget finance is we took took all of the 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 newer things and we fit them into our budget priorities to ensure that our budget priorities and the budget asks were in sync, and they work.
Yeah.
You know, so um we're not quite ready yet to have a second budget priority draft um done, I think after their next go-around, we'll have a affirmed-up budget message for everyone to um look at and approve. And I think, I mean, we've done a lot of talking, but I think those were the two highlights.
Wait.
Um. Those are the two highlights.
Okay, alternative energy canceled, they didn't have a quorum, so on to next one, I guess.
Anyone please, Thanksgiving.
Yeah. Okay. Alright, so next is approval of the minutes. Do you wanna send your comments along to her?
Yeah, I just had um a couple things, public comment, um she, more sherry fifteen Virginia link, she's an advocate, not an advocate.
Okay, a couple of. Yep.
Um next page, uh on the second page, finance, draft, budget priorities, um Mr. McMillan revr- reviewed the dr- I would consider the word draft, budget priorities. In reports from subcommittees and liaisons in the fourth line, it starts with towns approximate, it's forty two million dollar unfunded PEP liability, not a four point two million dollar debt. And it's post-employment benefit liability. And I had, there's a meeting for that coming up, it's um just I don't know if I've been to a meeting since then, it it's gonna be very dramatic for the town to see what the recommendations are going to be um to fund the post-employment benefit liability, I mean, no no town can ever get it to zero, the math to get forty two million dollars to zero is ridiculous in terms of what the town would have to allocate, um.
That's like more than the whole town budget in a year.
It's more, yeah, it's more than the whole town budget in a year, and it would decimate departments, um but there will be, you know, there there will be recommendations about new employees and how they're vested in health insurance, um which will impact our bargaining units. Um and these will just be recommendations from the this committee to the town um in the spring. From the PEP committee. From the PEP, yep.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the Cohasset School Committee minutes from Wednesday, November fourteenth, two thousand eighteen as amended?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You look like you had a question as well.
Yeah, can I just add, I'm sorry Louise, I just wanted to uh just let you know, two later start times, you did start the, you did throw.
Oh, yeah, sure, I'm sorry.
I have the names, uh we're meeting on the sixth.
Right? Okay, good, I just wanna follow up on that, 'cause I saw the email and I appreciate that you started the meeting.
Sixth. Six thirty to eight. Did you get a good response?
Um.
Um I have about ten people, a little representative, a little weak on the high school.
Oh.
Which is funny.
Well, maybe.
I figured, huh, it's almost too late.
I have a couple who might have high school students incoming.
Okay, well, thank you for.
Interesting.
Can I just make a personal comment on interface?
Sure.
Since it's just us friends here, um my son, my my younger son, who's now twenty three, used the service. He was having anxiety issues and sort of executive functioning issues in college his senior year, and um he called the service and uh they were very responsive and got him matched up with somebody that he clicked with, and then she left the state, but other than that.
So they didn't leave the state together.
Uh-oh. No, 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 but I guess my question is, will will it provide a Cohasset resident who might be out of state into school, refer?
Uh I believe it will.
Yeah.
That might be a little tougher, but uh I think they can do some homework.
Yeah, right.
We can ask that fellow, you can call and ask.
Well, he can call and ask, he's twenty three.
Yes.
Right.
Mommy doesn't need to do it.
No, really?
No.
Wow.
Okay, so follow-up and updates, I don't have anything right now. Um topic's not reasonably anticipated by the chairman, forty eight hours, we don't have anything on that, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn at nine nineteen.
Um prior prior to that motion?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Um is there any reason for us to um go back into executive session to maybe dis- no?
No.
Uh I I'm just, I'm just thinking to to discraft how we're gonna handle the promise we made of getting answers prior to next week's meeting.
Yeah, we probably will.
Yeah, if you guys are up for it, up to it, if this laid out up.
I think we should.
Yeah, we maybe should, we should.
Yeah.
I think we should.
'Cause I think it's better now than an hour before the meeting next week, personally.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So motion to resume executive session for exception number three.
Exception number three, strategy related to litigation, um do I have?
I'll make the motion, I don't think we're gonna make the motion.
Okay.
I'll sign it.
Yeah, I'm asking you to make a motion.
Motion.
But these guys will go home, right?
Yeah, yeah, you guys can go.
Are you sure?
Yeah, no, no, you guys wanna hang around, go ahead.
Do I do I?